Okay, for those of you that are watching the recorded version, we apparently lost our internet connection for a little bit, so we are back again. We're just finishing up on the discussion of operational work. Operational expectations policy for the personal administration. And so we were just discussing as far as the format of the summary and process of getting the summary back to board president for some organization to be put on the consent agenda for next month. And then following part of that is said, like I said, it will come up and will be posted on more docs on the consent agenda next month. So people can read both the whole report plus the summary of our comments from this meeting or the highlights from this meeting. And that basically then will get approved and be part of our evaluation of those operational expectations. So any other comments on Then we will go ahead and proceed to item 5.03, which is to report on the capital projects bond. And for that, I will turn things over to Mark.
Thank you. So still making progress on the on the high school. So we received this week the much waited permit for the grandstand. So that is underway and remember that got pushed up in the schedule to mitigate cost. There were pretty significant increase in the cost to the materials to set the grandstand. So that order to kind of beat that higher price increase, we pushed the schedule up. They've been doing the excavation, getting the footings, everything ready to pour and just have the permits. And now they can keep that part of the project moving. So part of our big theme throughout the entire project is to kind of do everything we can to mitigate the cost escalation. And that's one of the big, one of the big steps. So that's a good one to get get knocked out. The steel is for the first phase of the project. So the athletic wing and the commentary at classroom wing is pretty much complete. They've got the cranes have left. The slabs have been poured on the, on the second floor and part of the third floor, which is pretty exciting. They're doing the rough end of all the electrical and the plumbing. Good lot of the A back is in there. So it's actually going there and starting to look like a little bit of a building. If you've been in a house that's studs and have the rough in joints looking a little bit like that only metal and a lot bigger. So it's, it's pretty fun to get where you are in the building. That's interesting. The third floor is at least probably your thirty degrees colder than it is on the bottom, just to get, get things enclosed for the winter because it's dramatically, dramatically different. One of the kind of the more exciting pieces, I think, is that this Thursday, we're actually cornerstone has agreed to give some tours for the high school staff. So it'll be the first time that a lot of the staff have actually been able to go on tour the new building. So we thought that would be kind of a nice little bonus or route booster going into the break. So they're going to conduct several tours for staff to get to go see them.
This is the progress of the building. Is it possible for someone within cornerstone or the staff to like leotate that tour that you could post it that the community could look? You know, view it online or something?
Maybe I will ask. So we, one of the other things that is, if you remember the video that cornerstone did on the what they did, the concrete cores and the, they've done another one with the steel erection. That should be out very soon. So that is very exciting. So on three, five minute videos, something like that for that it goes through the whole process of the, of the steel erection and and does a nice job of kind of capturing progress on the building. That'll be out pretty soon, but I'll see if they can get some video footage from, from the tours as well.
It's just nice cool when you start seeing walls and you can start envision classrooms a little bit.
You could really start to see it take shape now because you've got the, the two wings and the comets is together. So it's, you really get a sense for the scale and what it's gonna, what's gonna look like.
As it's starting to get more and more stuff and value, stuff of value in there. I'm thinking like, you know, when wires start getting put in and everything, what's the security like overnight and such?
Security is pretty top notch. They're, in fact, they had somebody come in and paint some tag or whatever they do on a trailer and something else. So they have actually made agreement with the furniture police department. So they have keys and access to the site. They've installed more video cameras. So it's actually under pretty good video surveillance at night. And when so the, the lights perimeter, the culture alerted us to the video camera cameras. And it's actually monitored from a security company as well. So it's, it's pretty, pretty tight security.
That Bango exhibit down in Seattle. It was broken into and they took all of their wiring, like the ninety four Thanksgiving. Same thing like you probably are gonna have some pretty nice wiring.
Nope, nope, nope. It's all cheap bad wire.
Cheap.
Why do you even keep talking to follow it? Wifi access and things like that. So any questions for Mark? I think if I read the update right, this week's update will be the last.
Here, we're since the, the two, the next two are Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, we decided to take a couple of weeks off. After a hundred and forty six weeks, we've taken two off.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, two weeks off.
Those are appreciated. It's always fun to see the pictures. It's fun to drive by now, you know, whip it up. You start seeing more and more.
And I'll remind everybody, the website has a lot more pictures.
Yes.
There's a lot of photos on there. They're pretty cool.
Okay, there's no other questions and we'll go ahead and move on to item 5.04, which is an update on the February Ferndale School District levy. And that I will turn it over again to Mark.
Yes, I am actually gonna turn it over to Mrs. Leyton. So I, this is quite a treat for me to lovely presentation, but this is a PowerPoint that we put together that there's a group of us that been working on the district and provide information. Cause if you recall, the, as district employees, we provide information, we cannot campaign for the, for on school district time. We provide information only. So actually put together a PowerPoint. Heather, Fay, Jamie Plankovich and and Rav Dylan have kind of primarily been working on, on putting this together. So we this PowerPoint for our principals to go out and deliver to all members. So they had the facts and knew what was going on with the levy. So we're going to share that with you today. And since Heather delivered that to her staff, she's agreed to come here and deliver it for us.
If I can be towards, so I don't forget to do this, but just as a reminder to the board members as well. Our role is the same in the sense of if we're using our district email, then all we can do as far as the levy is provide information. We can't encourage people to vote for it. We, if we, you know, you're using your personal email, then you're good to go. But again, there's can be some pretty serious fines and repercussions if you use your school district email to promote. Do anything other than provide just straight information. So just want to make sure that you guys were aware of that.
Mark's loving his delegating authority. Kind of notice he's had a big smile.
Yeah, if it wasn't for the mask, we'd even see it more.
I know, just seen his eyebrows. So Mark had asked me to run through the information. Administrator shared with our buildings last week. And this is also the same informational PowerPoint that we informational PowerPoint with elimination last week. And to share that information. So first slide. So that's the second slide. It's on, it's on presentation. It might feel like we just did. So if you remember one fifty. So now we're at the point where we are doing, we're renewing that levy because it will expire December of twenty twenty two. So once again, it's time to put up our sleeves and get the information out to our community, get the information out to our administrators so that the intent was when families, administrators, teachers, parents, classified staff go home and spend time with their families, that they have this information and they have talking points that they can share information with families in broader circles. So next slide. So a little bit about us, we have about seven hundred employees in our district and approximately forty four hundred students in grades preschool through twelve. We have nine schools and we are one of the largest employers in Ferndale. One of the things that gets a little messy is the difference between bond levies. So a way to think about it is, yes, we do have a bond going on right now. It's helping build our high school. And the way to think about it is bonds are for buildings and levies are for learning. Bonds are like a mortgage and levies are what is sort of used to think about how we pay our utility bill in those cases. Those funds cannot be used, sorry, but bond funds cannot be used for operational expenditures. So very different funding sources and they can't co-mingle. So think about bonds are for buildings and levies are for learning and that helps you understand which pot of money can be used for what. So some district highlights. In the event to be a little bit interactive through these slides, I want you to think about, maybe share with me one or two things that you can think of other than what's on the slides right there that are highlights of our district. What are some things that we have done really well that our levy supported or levy funded? Somebody think of something?
I mean, proud of
Our music programs?
Our music programs and, and if you noticed, the parking lot was full when you came in and they weren't super excited about the board meeting. They were super excited about the so music, absolutely. Anything else? All extracurricular, well, many extracurricular extracurricular activities.
Our FFA just did really well at nationals a month and a half ago.
Yep, our FFA. So all things that support our students through the levy. Oh, the math Olympia has just started to math Olympia just started. Our, our elementary kiddos and our middle school kiddos look forward to that every single year and we have great competitors every single year. And some of the district highlights that we've thought about is we were the first district in Watkin County to get all of our students back in the building to in person learning safely. That was a huge milestone for us to be able to get our our teachers and our students in back to full time in person learning. So we did that in April of twenty twenty one. We have a really in-depth focus on academics along with social emotional learning for our students and our district uses technology and with one-on-one devices and grades three through twelve. So why are we asking the community to consider the renewal levy? Well, we know that Washington State is not fully funded, K-12 education and voter approved local levies help bridge the gap between what the state funds and what we need for our education system. It's important to remember, I mentioned this at the beginning, but our current levy does expire at the end of twenty twenty two. This is a replacement levy and the rate will remain the same. So the board has, has decided to do a dollar fifty and when levy renews, we're asking for a dollar fifty. So we're asking to use that money to maintain what we're currently able to do. So S R funds, we hear this a lot about maybe the assumption might not, sometimes I've heard that the assumption is that maybe we don't need levy funding because we have S R funds. So the important thing to remember about S R funds is that they are funds that were provided to us to meet this, the academic and social emotional health and wellbeing of our students as a result of the pandemic. So some of the things that we have used our S R funds are things that are very different than what we're using. Or so up there you'll see, we are going to use our S R funds for technology. We are replenishing devices within our organization. We have implemented a multi-tier systems of support. So we have three-year positions in each one of our buildings and you've heard and seen reports on the MTSS model in prior meetings. We are doing a K five for curriculum for English and language arts, and we're doing a K-12 math adoption. And we've also have intervention specialists at each one of our buildings. And speaking for my building alone, I have seen Crystal Kraft in my building do absolutely amazing things with intervention with working with groups of students to help them not only with behavior concerns, but academics concerns, working with teachers. I heard Peggy say, you know, what are we, sometimes teachers get overwhelmed and are we taking their care of their social emotional wellbeing too? Crystal has been an amazing collaborator in her intervention position and providing teacher support. She's a very skilled and very seasoned teacher. So she does an amazing job of going into classrooms and helping some of our teachers that might just be a little bit more overwhelmed, especially our new teachers. So it's, it's been an amazing position at our building and we're seeing a lot of benefits out of that. And we also have S R funds that we've used for COVID support with our nurses and our testing and our educators and whatnot.
The key, the member of our conversations for those that are new that didn't have the conversations about the S R funds, they're short-term monies, right? They have to be spent within three years and then they go away. So it's important that you'll notice all of these things are short-term expenditures that will expand our capabilities and expand our programs beyond the three years, but they're not committing us to expenditures beyond that three-year funding cycle, right? So we can't hire a bunch of staff that we won't be able to afford once the funding goes away. So this is all stuff with a three-year specific timeframe that it, it goes away, but we end up with significant investment in the programs. They'll impact us well beyond three years.
Are the intervention specialists part of the MTSS? It's part of that model. Yeah, it's part of that model. And it is also like Mark said, a, a very short-term funded position with S R funds. So is there a chart somewhere that shows the breakdown of how you decided to allocate?
Yes.
Where do I find that?
That is, I think on our website.
So we located it today on the website on the left-hand side that there is a column that has a bunch of headers and one of those is levy. And then on, when you go to the levy part of the website, there, there's a couple of questions. Question says the S R funds. Yes, and there's actually a PowerPoint presentation there also that has a great visual that shows the distribution.
Is that the PowerPoint to be, for meeting funds back or is it additional? The chart will be what was in the, what we looked at in the board meeting.
So then is there that I could further rip down as far as where it says replenish aging devices is, you know, what, what schools are getting upgrades?
Every teacher in the district is getting a new VAP.
Okay. Does that include paras?
No, every teacher in the district is getting a VAP. With the S R funds.
For not kids' devices.
The kids were funded through a different program, a different funding source.
Yeah, we just got a bunch of those in the beginning.
We got, we, we can give you a breakdown on all the different funding sources that we've had the student devices from, but the, the next order of student devices that we're waiting from was a separate funding that came specifically for student devices. It actually partially offset the cost of the staff devices as well. And that funding did not include funding for paraeducators. It was very specific on what the funding was for.
So again, the levy continues to fund, continues, continues the funding that we currently have to support students directly. Provides access to resources that students need and some of those things we talked about like clubs, athletic or support programs. Everybody's salary within the organization comes from the levy in one way or another. The important thing to think about this is that our levy dollars go directly to benefit our kids. So again, this slide, I want you to look at the list for a minute. And then as you're reading through those ten categories, twelve, whatever's up there, testing my eyesight. I want you to think about how each one of those positions right there impact kids. How do they benefit kids? So how do our nurses benefit kids? How do our transportation benefit kids? How do our kids benefit from counselors? How do they benefit from clubs? How do they benefit from paraeducators? And if something comes to mind, somebody want to tell me maybe how transportation benefits kids?
Well, I can tell you that the bus drivers are the first ones to greet our children when they pick them up in the morning and they can pretty much make or break their day just by being kind and welcoming and, you know.
Exactly what I thought and exactly think the same thing we talked about with our staff. Our bus drivers are the very first people to greet our children when they come on the door. And those positions are absolutely critical to a child having a good day or a poor day or turning a bad day into a good day. Simple greeting, simple, I'm happy to see you, simple, have a good day could turn that child's day around. So absolutely a critical position. What about nurses? How do nurses benefit our students?
Well, with all the COVID stuff, helping to navigate or helping to provide comfort to them, particularly with the younger children when they're not feeling good.
Absolutely. How do our paraeducators benefit our students? Extra connection and the extra help that students might need or supervision that they might need or assistance. They fill so many gaps that our paraeducators are a critical, critical part of our education system. They provide support to all students. They provide support to our administrators. They provide support to our teachers. They provide support to our families. And I I actually remember being in, I don't know if it was second grade or third grade at Mountain View Elementary School and I was determined. I was determined to learn how to double dutch, jump rope. And we had a particular paraeducator and I remember for the life of me, he would not let me quit. I don't know how many times I got slapped with that rope. But you know, I think about that quite often in my adult life. It might've been just double dutch in the playground, but I remember this person looking at me and coaching me and telling me I could do it. And when you feel good about doing something, that carries on into the classroom. I don't know, I don't know that I've ever told her this story, but it was actually Ms. Rogli here.
I'm still doing it.
But she twirled those, but I, I remember the day she looked at me and I was gonna give up and she said, you could do this. You could do this. And I thought, I can't, I can't do this. So not just the academic piece, but you know, our paraeducators have so much contact with our kids every single day. And they, and, and in our middle school right here, in my middle school, our paraeducators find out things that are going outside at recess time before the kids even get into the building and those walkie talkie comes in hand. As soon as Johnny's coming through the door, the paraeducator's gotten a hold of us and they're like, how did you know? Well, we have good paraeducators outside. So what about our coaches?
I think I can say this for this because I'm in almost all the stuff at the high school. But without coaches and clubs, no student will have the opportunity do what they do to experience extracurriculars, have fun, to have spirits and to just go to school and know that there are something for them at the end of the day.
They're, they're great mentors.
Yep, great mentors.
And motivators.
Big motivators. And research, research shows us that it takes one adult, one caring adult to make a difference in a child's life most times. So coaches, nurses, bus drivers, maintenance teachers, counselors, paraeducators, food services, right? Like, I don't know too many people that want to get up at four o'clock in the morning on really poor weather days sometimes to come here and make sure that our kids are fed. Kids don't get another meal in another place. So thinking about this list, there's if you think about the things that we talked about, it would be, it, it would be a really hard thing and it was a really hard thing when we had to lay off a hundred, about a hundred staff member when we failed our levy a short time ago because it weren't, it were exactly these things that you're talking about that we had to cut and we had to make those decisions. So the levy is hugely, hugely beneficial for our students. And I just can't think of another way to say it other than all of our positions that support students are much needed. So we need to make sure that we do what we can do to get this information out so that we can back your information to our community so that they can make a decision. And so like I said, when our levy failed in twenty twenty, I think the number was approximately a hundred staff that we had to cut off. We had to lay off or cut. Next slide, Jackson. This we talked about a little bit, but we'll talk about it. So the levy helps fund our academic programs. So special education, our advanced learning, which is, which in our K eight is what we call our magnet programs on our high school. We have our AP classes and other accelerated classes that we have helps fund smaller class size on our eight-period high school schedule. And our electives in the high school, which are helps our kids be career-ready like sports med, vet tech, autocad. It's not on this list, but I always tell Mr. Menefee, it's my absolute favorite elective ever and it is ballroom dancing. And you might not think ballroom dancing is important, but ballroom dancing is important. And I'll tell you the story that I told my staff. My son who's six foot four, who is not coordinated. He's a lineman, not very coordinated, big, big kid. And there was a day when I went down to the high school and probably bringing in something to eat or something to drink or something. And he says, well, I'm in the cafeteria, I'm in ballroom dancing. And I thought, really? But anyway, when you walk in there, what is beautiful about that particular class is my son, who, football player, athlete in his letterman's jacket, was dancing with a girl that he may not have ever made contact with in the hallway. Not from the same social group, definitely didn't hang out, definitely didn't see each other in the hallway very often. But what that class did was it built that connection between him and her. And to see them later on have a relationship with each other outside of ballroom dancing was absolutely amazing. So give classes like that, give kids the opportunity to make connections with each other and build relationships with the other each other. And those relationships then in turn help build our community as a whole. So I love Mr. Menefee. I love ballroom dancing. I did not like the homework because he cannot dip his mother to save his life. But I do love the class. So I'm glad we brought it back.
Or was it his mother couldn't dip?
I couldn't dip and I, I had a little bit of trust issues with it. I will admit, but just that camaraderie. I will admit, but just that camaraderie, you know, that, that it rocks.
It's granded at the same time, got into ballroom dancing and loved it. And that's what I thought, I never, ever would have put my kid as.
I know.
During any, no.
It was, it's actually, if you, if you have it and you ever have an opportunity to see it, it is the, one of the most beautiful things that I've ever seen. See kids that would, may not ever have a relationship with each other, finding that rhythm and that connection through music and being able to salsa and communicate that way with each other. It's incredible. It's teaching them things that they don't even know. That's levy dollars. Let's see, next slide. And we've talked about this technology here, levy helps fund technologies. So our six, 12 kids, they get their own device. Our three, five kids are provided their own device and their devices stay in their classroom. And then our K2 kids are provided access to a device at school. Next slide. Again, we've talked about some of these, they help fund after-school tutoring, athletics, music, drama, robotics, STEM, math, Olympiad, any clubs that we have, all those things that help our students make a connection to our school and to their peers outside of the classroom. So, but the levy is not a new tax. It replaces our expiring levy and it will really, it will maintain at the current rate. And in 2023, the tax rate will be no higher than a dollar fifty for 1,000 assessed value. Again, we keep saying it, but it's a, it's a replacement levy. It's a replacement levy, it's replacing the levy that we currently have. Next slide, Jackson. This slide right here is a bar graph and it shows you that Ferndale is the second lowest. I think Blaine is the lowest in terms of what we're asking for from our voters. Gives you the visual of what other districts are asking and right now we are the second lowest in the county.
I have a question on that one. Blaine low because they have BP.
They hit, they hit their balance of collection at a lower tax rate. That's why they're lower.
Because they have.
Because they have a higher tax base with their refineries.
So some key facts, our current levy expires December 30, 31st, 2022. This is a replacement levy, it's not a new tax. The tax rate will not increase, will remain the same at 150. It's a two-year levy, so two years from now, we will be doing the same thing. And at that, and when the time comes, at that time, you guys will get to decide if we're gonna do another two-year or four-year. But it's my understanding that we went two-year, two-years so that we could get back on track with the other schools in the county and then go every four years after that. Bonds are for building, levies are for learning, and ballots will begin being mailed out January 19th, February 8th. This right here, if you haven't already, this is the QR code to, to our, what's the thing you like, Mark? What's it called, the thing you like?
Website?
Oh, the joint, Thought Exchange. This is the QR code to the Thought Exchange. So you could take a picture of it, you can share that QR code with anybody that you happen to see over the holiday vacation. If you have a question about the levy, through the Thought Exchange, you can see questions that other staff employees or community members have asked. And you can, you can go in and you can rate those questions. So if you hit, it's like hitting a like or a love button. So if you react to it, then that tells us this many people kind of have the same question. And so what we do with that information is we look at the questions and then we figure out how to write responses and include that, that feedback into Mark's newsletters on our website. It gives us a way to connect to the community and answer their questions. So that's the QR code, feel free to share it with anybody, it is a thought exchange.
Thank you, Heather. Any questions for Heather at this point? One thing, just to know, a couple of things to just reiterate and highlight what you were saying. It does seem like you just ran a levy, which we sort of did. And part of the process with that is, again, for information for Steve and Peggy. So the levy, the current one that we passed in November of last year, it runs till the end of 2022. And we have the opportunity, we're gonna go ahead and pass, so we have for '23 and '24. Cut out there right now. If it doesn't pass in February, if that should happen, then we have one more chance in 2022 to rerun it again. The challenge being is that if we don't have those funds, then we have to budget, we don't have a past levy, we have to budget based on not having that money. And the way that school funding works, Mark, correct me if I off the top of my head say this wrong. We have to let teachers and staff know by May 15th whether or not we're gonna hire them for the following school year. And if we don't have a past levy, any, any position that is funded by the levy or supported by that, we can't hire that person. So we have to tell them that their job is, is not gonna be existent in the coming school year. So that's why we do it early in February, so that we have time to, to deal with that. Another good place is in the August 2021 meeting. There is the presentation of the citizen's budget, which has a little bit more information on where those funds are going and where levy dollars and how that impacts. That's another resource if you're looking for the source of information to help just educate yourself. And certainly avail yourself to, you know, Mark, Melinda, Jesse and I, any of the admin team, if you've got other questions about that or are looking for information to share with people if they have questions you aren't sure about.
Yeah, so is there a per-student cap we're allowed to grant? I mean, it was a dollar fifty per thousand dollars assessed value. But, you know, however much you have to budget for kids, I mean, if you're allowed to, what was it, $2,000? I thought it was.
Yeah, there's, there's two.
So it was $2,500 per student.
Or was it just?
Plus inflation.
Plus inflation, yeah. I was kidding for that guy. Or $2.50 per thousand, whichever one is the less of those two.
I was just wondering what was that?
And. And that's, as the graph shows, why Blaine's is so low is because they max out. That's the most they can collect. Any other questions?
I have one. Last time, almost said last year, because it feels like it. But last time we did, the board members, the board actually did virtual town halls.
It was last year.
Was it last year? Okay, so virtual town halls for information on the levy. And I'm asked, do you want to do that again?
I would. So, so what we did was on the Thursday, Facebook Live things, actually it wasn't a Thursday.
No.
But it was like that in that you had panelists on Facebook and you could ask, you know, whatever community member you want to ask to be on that panel. I had like a realtor, I had, oh gosh, totally blanking. I had a county executive, I had some teachers, I had friends, I had all sorts of different people, different voices. And if it were to fail, how would it affect our real estate prices? If it were to pass, how would it, you know?
How's the state portion affect, I mean, you know, because our state taxes going up, state education taxes, what's, I haven't. You know, you know, state collects.
Yeah, I don't believe the state is doing anything different than they have.
That's, I mean, that is yet to, depends on what they do during the legislative session that's coming up, but there's no, I haven't.
No noise about any increases.
No noise about any increases.
Is this one of the, this year is one of the budget.
Yeah.
One of the budget ones where they can't really do many big bills at all, they can just wiggle within what they're. I mean, it is.
This is the big year.
This is the big year.
The buy-in, I think, of all those.
Same budget, I think, which would make a big difference.
I think so, yeah.
So that would make this the, sure, but I don't know, I'd have to work.
But there has been no, there's, so one of the WASDA, one of the WASDA priorities has been for the. So one of the priorities has been looking at what the state's model is of what a school needs to be funded and that it's very outdated. And so WASDA for years has been saying, "Can you guys rework this? Can you look at this? Can you maybe provide more than one psychiatrist for the entire middle school population of the state?" And that has been like such baby steps that they're not even close to looking at that and doing that. But it's something that WASDA just keeps chipping away at and hopefully.
So I've heard a lot of enthusiasm for that.
I would, I'd have to have everybody go, but I'll do it.
Yeah, I'm open. And basically.
So you have to go round up other people to do it.
That's, well, and it's not completely, in the one that I was doing, I was Johnny Conway, we do it for various reasons. And there were some administrators and some different people that were already on there doing some of the talking as well. It was basically just to have representation of different groups and different people to.
Teachers, right? Or you just.
I had like some parents and some community members that were on mine. You know, it, it basically, part of it was just providing different voices and different time availabilities for people. Because it was opened up, the invitation was put out on Facebook, I'm not sure, assume on the webs, the website that we had a list of this one they were going on, you know, so people could just get on. And we had somebody monitoring the questions that were coming to the chat and answering those. Plus we had, you know, points, informational points that we were looking to make. And so just wanting to get the word out as far as so that people understood. The biggest challenge that you'll find in the whole school funding model is to have trouble understanding it. Even those of us on the board sometimes have trouble understanding it when we deal with it all the time. Just because, you know, they talk about the maintenance and operation levy. Well, aren't you taking care of maintenance? Well, it's really not maintenance, it's more for planning and those other programs.
They relabel that, isn't that?
They, they keep relabeling.
Well, it was educational programs and operations.
You know what, I think it probably started out as for maintenance and morphed over time. I'm curious about the history of that.
It actually started out as enrichment.
Really? Maintenance and operations.
Because they, states started funding less and less of the portion of education that was required. As the state ran into budget shortfalls, they kept passing along more of the debt to the locals. So the local school districts kept raising their levy bids because they needed more money to actually operate the district. So it's, there's, if you want, I'll give you a book that gives you the history back to the 70s that's well-watched.
There's so many of those, like misconceptions on it. One of the ones that irritated the heck out of me was the having a special election for this in February. It's like because of school funding and because you don't want to lay off, you know, a large portion of your staff and then rehire them later that summer, it's like it, February is the only date because in America we only have four voting.
No, they sync it up with the other school districts' generals.
That's not, and that's not just a fluke that they sync it up either. It's because every single school district kind of knows these rules of we don't want to have to rip people in April just to rehire them. August.
Well, it's incredibly disruptive because a lot of the staff, especially in a competitive job market, leave. They don't stick around to be retired in August, they go get jobs in other places. So it's, it's incredibly disruptive to the entire community.
And it, it prevents collaborative planning and, you know, there's just lots of, of things that make it really a challenge to frustrate those of us that have been on the board for a while and newbies as well. So.
Okay. Any other comments or likes? The events where you're spreading the information about the community members? Do you guys have like student representative in it too or you, but do you also want student representative too? Because the levy like are the things that impact the student. And I know lots of students will wish to also be in it and spreading out the words. Because with, because it's the levy bill, many of us are gonna be devastated, of course. And I know from like the point of view of like a student who are like the one who get impacted like this, we have like the experience of, you know, being the one who get the stuff. So I know that lots of students would like to, you know, spread out the words and, yeah.
Yeah.
You can be online, Facebook.
Yeah, you want to be on the, what, to Jesse?
Yeah, actually right now, I'm working with Trick at the high school for my leadership project. I'm like, worrying about levy, like young voters, so that's my leadership project.
Yeah, definitely having the student voice on those meetings for people, you know, and not, it's not limited to you guys. If there's other students, they're interested. Set her.
They're connected, so, yeah.
Yep. Well, we'll get you guys coordinated on the town halls too, that'd be great.
And just for the odd years or budget years in 105 days, even years, or other sessions, this is a shorter session here, coming up.
So this is the year where they can't really do much.
They haven't, yeah, they're, they're hopefully more focused.
Oh, sure. You go with that.
I'm, I'm gonna live in my bubble. Okay, good. Well, thanks again, Heather, thank you, Mark, and to everyone who's working on the levy, thank you. Okay, so next we go to section six of our meeting to focus on students. And first item there is the review of the monitoring or the results policy 2.5, our 2.5 social studies. Again, just for clarification and not so to be too overly repetitive. But this is a report that we were given previously so that we could have a chance to read it and go through and then discuss it tonight. The report or the results policies, those, when we get those reports, we're not judging them on compliance, partially compliant or non-compliant. Here we're looking on whether or not the, the goal is demonstrating reasonable progress or not demonstrating reasonable progress. And like they kind of alluded to earlier, I think that we'll see that COVID kind of really played into some of the progress that was made. But again, I, I love this report because until we had the, this information a few years ago where we started with it, we really had, had never talked about the social studies program within the board meetings and that portion of the curriculum and how are we doing it? And just seeing some of the changes that have come forth from the 2019 report to now and some of the changes in process with that are, are great to see and, yeah, maybe are just a testimony to the power of the coherent governance model. So with that, I'll open up the floor. I guess, Faye, do you have any opening comments or anything or?
You took the words right out of my mouth. Thank you. That would be my, my caveat, as we wrote in the report. Shortly after we submitted the last honest form report, we went into the school closures and then had to completely shift what we were doing, the curriculums we were using. And then this year is kind of really transitioning back in, so, thank you.
So questions, comments, thoughts?
And, you know, the audit of the materials. And, uh, you know, the, the audit of the materials that were, you know. Out of, out of date and, uh, and when the cycles were replacing them, um, I mean, uh, is there? I guess I just wonder where, 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 you must be replacing some, you know. On the timeline, there must be some upgrades going on this year and then coming up. Um, what materials, where to find the materials that you are going to be using?
Peggy, that's a great question. One of the things that we do have is, um, we've got a little bit behind in our curriculum adoption process. So as you noticed in the S presentation, last year elementary adopted the K five ELA curriculum. This year we're focusing on a K twelve math adoption, moving into adoption of curriculum next fall. Um, so we are kind of like working on curriculum areas by curriculum areas. So our goal is to look at social studies in beginning in twenty twenty three. However, what I will say, Kelly can speak a little bit to this, that elementary with ARC and some of the social studies pieces. Uh, we do a lot of supplementing, um, our teachers have. And as you can see, very old textbooks, especially at secondary level. So they, um, pull in current resources and supplement with what they have. Kelly, I'll let you talk a little bit about ARC and Studies Weekly.
Sure, um, maybe those are, that's a really great question because you're asking, um, not only about social studies curriculum. But I'm guessing you're wondering curriculum in general, how do we potentially kind of vet those or find those or screen those? And having just gone through that process with the ELA adoption, the English one regards to adoption at that elementary level. And now we've moved into the math adoption. We typically start with, um, with both of those. We start with the proper bulk ed reports. And so ed reports, um, are an online, um, material review, um, where they are vetted. Based on a number of different, um, gateways. So what happens is we typically start by renewing the availability of resources within ed reports. So basically, anything that's available for adoption has been screened and vetted there by a team of educators. For a number of different hours for very specific criteria. So we start there, um, and then typically what we do is we would order samples of materials to bring back to our teams. And then further vet those before we ever even consider piloting those materials. So it's a really comprehensive process that typically takes a number of months. And actually, when we ended up, um, or years, when we ended up bringing the ELA back, it was about a two-year process and we presented it. Or last year, and, um, there were a lot of reviews, the curriculum, even a community review process that goes with it. Absolutely.
Actually, with the, the English, the English to language art adoption last year, there was a community input process. Part of it, and they had it up, but nobody in the community said anything. So we asked for.
Surprises to me because I, that's one thing I've heard a lot of. It was like, I can't even see the materials. It's like, well, there must be a place to be.
They were there and that was, uh, the meeting, um, they said they hadn't gotten any input from it. So we asked as a board for you to please extend that community input because we really want that.
Yeah, and it's like, okay, well, first a breakdown in community. Because it seems like there is a huge amount of interest in, yeah.
As a parent. Uh, he's got an email about it. So parents got an email. It was on the website. It was clear on there. It's there.
Tell me how many people actually look at the website. I'm just curious.
And if you're not a parent, I mean, yes, you can look at this, you can look at the curriculum as well, but it's.
And I appreciated that about the board because you did ask us to go back and do a little bit more advertisements about it. Um, to try to elicit that conversation with the community. So for that circumstance, we actually, um, I was on the radio even talking about it. I got to do an interview, which is great. And we did, you know, that's what, we had did a press release about it and it was posted. So I did appreciate that we were really trying to encourage it in the last, um, our last adoption. So there's a very intentional board policy that aligns our adoption of any set of instruction materials. And so what's happening at this point is we are going through this replacement cycle. Um, basically, year by year, there are specific materials that have been outlined for replacement. So right now, we are in the math portion of that. And then we will continue on and I feel really fortunate that we were able to use those S R funds. Because when we failed that levy initially, we actually had to put the replacement cycle on, on pause and on hold. Um, because we weren't able to move forward with that at that time. So I'm really grateful we're able to use those funds and continue on through this process. So.
Yeah, the curriculum is not cheap. Huge expense for, right, some ELA materials that you're adopting are one point three, three million dollars. Um, and I mean, our elementary materials are significantly outdated. So it is, it is a cost. But the bottom line is that is what we are continuing to work off of as we are, um, cycling through in terms of updating our materials. I have a related question as far as the age of the materials. It seems like the AP stuff on here is a lot. Well, is generally newer than the rest of it. Is that a requirement of the AP college board? And how often do they require things to be updated? Because I'm kind of asking that on a, that's great for the AP kids. But an equity type of.
That's a great question, Melinda, and I can find that information out for you.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't.
That's okay. I can, I will definitely ask and tell that to you.
Well, I certainly appreciated the look at the, um. Speaking of AP classes, at, you know, who are going into them, how can we encourage more? You know, I, I think that we kind of scratched the surface with some of that data and I don't know that it's a real. In, in my mind, I would question the validity of the comparison just because you're dealing with pre-COVID and mid-COVID. And how does that all, you know, track? In fact, we're actually looking at that and encouraging kids to be thinking or at least working towards encouraging kids. Considering those AP classes. Because again, I think setting that bar higher, even if they get, you know, partially to it. They're getting more than if the bar is low and they get over. I also applaud the looking at trying to get some stand, uh, standardization or. Equalization between features and classes and grading, you know, so that we do have a little more comparison across the, you know. A in this class is the same as a A in this class, not, you know, an A in this class was a B in this class. Was curious and probably question that maybe should or shouldn't ask. But we were looking at the courses taken by the different grade levels and the number of Ds or no credits. Did we do any correlation if there was any teacher? You know, just in, in the sense of, you know, are younger teachers having more trouble connecting or older?
I actually didn't even think about that, but that would be a, a good thing to work on without.
Yeah, because I mean, I think that might go along with that standardization to see, you know, maybe some teacher is harder. You know, is a tougher grader and or, um, you know, maybe there are teachers who are. Connecting better and we need to utilize their skills to help develop some of the other teachers, I mean, as far as professional development. Other comments?
I had kind of comments the same or similar vein on the AP stuff and you, Kevin. And I know with COVID throwing a wrench into things definitely has upended stuff. But I'm hoping that going forward, we can, we can focus on having a range of, of. Challenging courses offered for all students. I believe the last time AP US history was offered was twenty seventeen. And in twenty nineteen, when my, my other son was interested in it, it wasn't offered and I was like, well. Why not? And got the question, oh, we asked the kids and they didn't want to take it. And it's like. So that you talked in here about how do we, how do we get kids into those classes and the whole self-select versus, you know. Recruiting or, you know, telling them, yes, you can do it. Do in the double Dutch. Let's do the double Dutch with AP. But with the, the, you know, easy A over here. And then AP US history is a really tough class. Somebody's really concerned about their GPA. And there's not somebody saying they're like, no, I know you have the skills. You can do this. You're gonna get less and less kids choosing A push. And going for an easy A and then it's been five years and you don't have A push. And you've kind of lost your culture of being an academically rigorous or offering academic rigor.
So are AP classes just open to anybody who wants to take them or do you have to maintain a certain GPA to get into them more?
No prerequisites as, as I understand it. But I, I know the US history, the rumor at our house when that was. Uh, that class is like, you know, there's way too much homework. There's way too much. It's not worth it. Go with this when you'll get a better grade. You know, and I always go back to the added, just somehow we've got to get rid of that GPA or, or equalize it out. Or weighted or something because potentially getting a C in an AP class that has harder rigor. You may learn more than A in.
My older son had taken it and learned so much. He is definitely our history school. My younger son who couldn't take it, took the history class and did the self-study on the side and got like the book and such. And he did fine, but it's like each year it just dilutes and dilutes and it dilutes. And it's, the teacher gave them like, here's some things you can study on your own. But something about being in a class and just like, we're all in this together and we're. It just, I'm afraid that as years go on, it's just gonna be, oh, we don't do that here.
They so often like say honors classes. Yeah, it was separate sorts of things.
That is, an AP class, at the end of it, they can take a test and if they get the certificate, they get the college credit. The honors class.
So the honors class is different than the AP classes because, um. Usually people take honors because there's like weighted GPA and also like unweighted GPA. But our school doesn't have like weighted or unweighted, um, unweighted. So people just take on their classes because it's kind of satisfied that they like, you know, get the better chance of like learning a difficult. So the difficult, um, materials in the student chapter at that level. Um, but while people who took AP just, um, usually want, um, college credit. Like, um, around two thousand nineteen, I've taken A push. It was very hard. And I heard like there's, uh, there's a culture like do not get, do not take this teacher because he's a very hard grader. But at the same time, after I take the test, like A push at the end of the year. Um, and I transferred the credit to, um, WCC. Um, even though I have like an okay score, all that credit like helped me, um, remove lots of my, um, prerequisites. And that's what's like, that's just all worth it to me in general, to take the AP class and get a credit. And then transferred it around like, you know, the schools and college board. That just have a lot of student, you know, save money.
There's a lot of those, saving money for college and there's also the self-efficacy of doing something. You can do it. And so then you go and you do the next thing and then you do the next thing and just the whole.
It, it, it's a self-rebuilding prophecy, so to speak, and build the confidence and, and it, you know, as you mentioned. The AP classes and being able to take, you know, those, get that college credit. We, we talked in here about trying to eliminate some of the barriers as far as of taking those tests. But it, it can be substantial and our oldest basically wiped a year out of college because of his AP credits. You know, that's a substantial.
When I was compared to running start, which I mean, I know that the quality might be.
Benefits of having AP at the high school is that you keep those kids at the high school.
That's true.
Uh, running start, you. They're not there. And so the community, I think, of that.
Does AP credits were transferable then?
Depending on what score you get on the test. You do have to take the test and the test is, um, costs money, which is something also equity wise. But we've talked about making them more equitable for, um, all students to take them who want to take them.
It depends on the, the college and the score you get, you know, what happens. Because it offers people, because there are some parents who, who assume their children not be going to college until they're college age and.
What is more popular with AP at the high school is that AP is offered around. Some freshmen can also take it and also a sophomore can take it, like all, almost all class level. Except for running start, which only starts in junior, it just.
Do they offer IB courses as well?
Other comments or questions? Okay, you know, I, I think this, like I said, it's great information. There's a lot of room to improve. Um, but at least we're talking about it. Cause like I said, prior to the coherent governance, social studies was kind of not even on the radar. Obviously it needs to be. So thank you for the report you guys put together. Um, again, board members, if you get your summary sheets to me, that would be great. And then I'll get the other summarization that will show up on the consent agenda next month. So with that, this takes us on to item six point zero two, which is a report on the academic and wellbeing recovery plan. Phase two and with that, I'm gonna go over the page.
Uh, I just give you a very, very brief, um, overview. ARC and I, they, um. Submitted our attestation, that we are working our plan, that we are communicating our plan as you saw. And I was communicating how we're spending our rest of dollars with various stakeholders. Parts of the, and Kelly and I have been very involved in the, um, execution of the plan. In terms of, um, ensuring that we have the diagnostic supports for both academics. And social emotional learning in place. And then.
They do want to explain the diagnostics.
Yeah, so it's like, um, assessments that we use throughout the year. Um, at K through eight, we use iReady to look at, um, English reading and math. And then we also, um, in the high school, they have more because it, there's so many individual courses. And they'll have, um, assessments between. More common assessments versus a diagnostic assessment that we purchase as a program. Um, so for social emotional learning, we have Panorama, which is a survey we administer three times a year. Which is the same, we use iReady three times a year as well to do a beginning, a mid, um, and end of year assessment. And what those tools allow us to do is identify the needs of our students and then put supports in place to help. Bridge, uh, different learning gaps.
Oh, is, is it okay to ask a question? So, um, okay, parents ask about panorama, you know. That's got, that kind of a connotation, thanks to, well, anyway, um, uh. Can parents see what's asked on the surveys and the, and the, this, that you use panorama for?
They can absolutely, um, touch base with their students, um, school counselor and they can walk them through the survey questions.
And there are also really great reports that Panorama provides that you're also. To families at like our semester report card time, that, that shows kind of the response and how it got broken out. So there's some great resources for that family communication if parents have wonders about that too, that we have available.
I guess my question is the whole, the whole process, um, you know, you just administer wellbeing surveys to students or how does this work?
Um, so the panorama survey is taken three times a year and it asks a series of questions looking at things like self-efficacy. Um, growth mindset, um, self-regulation and ask questions around those themes. And then provides information on, um, we can look at it from a district level, we can look at it from a school level. We can look at it from a individual level to see what supports that we can put in place to support either individuals, small groups. Or whole school, um. Interventions to support that growth in social and emotional learning.
Um, so, I mean, are these surveys voluntary or is this, I'm just.
We did, we asked the students to take it. We, you know, they, I would say, we had pretty high response rate from this survey.
I just have had parents ask about this. It's like, okay, you know, my kid came home with this survey and I'm really upset because, you know, I saw this. They were asking this question or that question. And so that's why I was wondering if I could just find, you know, if you could put out information for families. So that they would be clearer, you know, again, the transparency thing about what surveys actually are used for. You know, again, the transparency thing about what surveys actually are used for. Whether they're optional, um, you know, who they're administered to. Um, just be really open about what's being done with them, but what happens to the information once it's collected? Who all receives it? Does it stay within the school? Is it used by other, you know, um, other entities as well? I, I, those are just questions that I've been asked to ask. So I'm asking.
The Panorama stays within the school, the district, um, doesn't go outside of that. And it is used, um, to provide interventions, um. We heard on the S F piece about having intervention specialists, that we use some of that data, our classroom teachers will use that data to support kids. Um, the Healthy Youth Survey, that is a survey that is voluntary, that students longitudinally take. And that data is, um, non-identifiable by student, whereas the Panorama is identifiable by student, that's what stays in house. Um, and then the Healthy Youth Survey is a state county, um, provides us with data at that level as well as.
Um, I think it would be good for the school district to, you know, put something together to explain why, you know, kids are given surveys, what's asked on those surveys, where that data goes and how it's being used. Cause I think that would go a long way toward dispelling some, some concerns about use of information and.
Um, would be also a good idea because I know that like, um, every single year, like before the year of school year start, um, lots of teachers just hand out pamphlet to like the parents assign. If we could have like something like that, like just inform student, uh, parents about the information that the survey says they're gonna take. Or like, just like various thing like that. As, um, you know, the parents can sign it and, you know, agree on it. Would that be good?
No, I would think so. I mean, I'm just thinking of it from a, from a perception standpoint, you know? The, the, these are the things that, that get people worked up, you know, and maybe, maybe there's nothing to it. And, you know, if there was this more communication and, and, you know, just a layout thing so they could see this is what it is and this is where it goes and.
In, in an information vacuum or information void, people make up their own details.
Well, and you're, you know, and people got good imaginations.
You do.
No, I do.
Good. Yeah. So having that information, I mean, I think you're right. That would go a long way in for transparency and just helping people understand. And then if they do have questions, where to go get more information, because it sounds like the information is available, they can access that. Um, but sometimes they don't know it until after the fact and that's always creates a frustration.
Or, or even knowing, you know, that maybe something is voluntary and, and, you know, they can opt out of it. It's just having the control to be, you know, I don't want to do that.
And at the same time explaining why the district does it. Because in, in some of those cases, we can support the students better. Um, yeah, but most of the cases I should say, so.
And that very much was back to our conversation earlier when we're talking about the living and we're talking about meeting needs of our students in terms of social emotional learning, which is very much part of the wellbeing or the plan that we're talking about tonight. Um, the academic and wellbeing recovery plan is we are very much tasked with, with addressing the social emotional needs of our students in a way that is, um, that we can monitor, right? Exactly. And so that is one of the pieces that we have included that we continue to, um, to work through and can continue to receive feedback and grow in. Um, but that is some part of our plan. So we use that iReady, um, diagnostic three times a year. Um, for K through eight students as well as Panorama, um, three times a year as well. Other.
And then the other piece is just the, um, putting in the identified supports to support our students when we have the data so that we know what we're supporting them on. Um, as you had in the levy presentation, the N T S S multi system is for, that is a big part of our academic and wellbeing plan. Is to put those systems into place to support our students, um, accessing both social emotional learning and academic learning. Um, and just working out, making sure that we can help all of our kids access regular. Perfect. Um, one of the, one of the big pieces that we put in place was summer school. That was a, um, where we use the data. Invite students to come to summer school. We had a really robust, um, summer school program. So that was one of, one of our interventions that we made sure that we provided for our students. Um, really focusing on relationship building, on belonging, on building that, um, connection to school through whatever. And it's an update on, as I said, it's one carry goal. Uh, so how do we make sure that all of our kids? Or anything else?
Okay. Any other questions?
So this was, was the, the phase one, you decide how to spend it. The phase two is how we're diagnosing it, how we're measuring it. And then phase three, you're gonna show us the results of it, right? So what would you guys consider success in the results? What results are you looking for that you'd be like, home run?
But I would say phase three is also like not just looking at results, but it's looking at continuous improvement. So what do we need to continue? Because we know this isn't going to be over in a year. We're not. You know, we, we're gonna, we have a long way, you know, a long way to go and a long way to support updates later term. Um, and we're still navigating a pandemic. So phase three will be really looking at, like, looking at our iReady data, looking at our Panorama data, complete three assessments. Um, looking at where we are in our N T S S implementation. And that will be the end of year, one of three for implementing, implementing an N T S S system. Uh, and then working like, where do we need to go to continue moving this forward next year?
So like a success could be identifying those parts that need more and then you just come in on those more.
We're also looking. Um, that as well and monitoring that very closely. Okay, and shrinker.
Any other questions? Thank you, Meg, Kelly. Um, so next on the agenda, item seven is sharing and we'll start with our student board members. So, Jazzy.
Um, it's already, it's really. So I'm just gonna ask, like, at, at. Ask. Um, so the holiday is coming and the district, I just saw the district Instagram post there. Um, our high school did a hall decorations, um, there are lots of student volunteer and, and, you know, the holidays just look really Christmas. Giving the student spirits. Um, tomorrow, um, so usually the choir has, at the high school has the winter concerts and also, um, other concerts which, which we sing Christmas songs. But due to like COVID and lots of things happened this year, uh, we merged both of them into one concert. So tomorrow is open to all, um, community members, um, who can come in, um, donate for treats to help us, you know, fundraise for, you know, our church. Um, for like choir and we're gonna sing Christmas songs. So, um, the last thing I'm gonna talk about is, so, um, I've been working with, well, the, um, principal as our high school student committee, I think I talked about it, uh, a couple of, um, board meetings before. And that meeting, we just have lots of students coming in to just give out ideas and talk to the administrations about what's going on, what's the issues they've been dealing with. And, um, just been working administrations of our schools to fix issues and all that stuff. And one of the thing, um, that, you know, students come up with, like, little committees that can happen at our schools, like, for example, students can come in volunteer to like pick up trash in us, at our high schools. Because, um, there's like sometimes lots of trash and those can count as like community, community services. And which are good because lots of students, especially seniors who are needing community service, services for, you know, uh, college applications and all that stuff. So, yeah.
Um, I was gonna, I was gonna talk about, I'm doing a trick, but I already spoke about that, so.
Thank you. Um, so, board members. Steve, Peggy, Melinda. Speak up, ones.
Great guy in seminar.
I haven't even gotten a treat yet.
Um, I'm looking toward, a whole family will be home as of Christmas Eve. Granted, it'll be late Christmas Eve.
Kind of like the next.
Better late than never. I think if I get him home from the airport in time, Santa won't see us. I will. So.
Uh, the only thing I've got is just a little teaser for the new year. Um, your favorite document of the year is coming in January. Uh, the F one ninety-six, which is the, uh, year-end, um, report that we are creating for O S P I. So that will be something after the first of the year. So something to look forward to.
It's always Mark's favorite. Lots of numbers and lots of columns and lots of pages.
Well, kind of. Huge budget.
It's the year-end. It's the, so the, the. F one ninety-five is the budget, the F one ninety-six is the year-end national report.
Okay. Um, the rest of the executive team.
You guys have to come up with something next.
I can do that.
So they were, they were sharing throughout. Looking at credit for that. So that brings us to items eight, nine on the agenda, the superintendent and board's consent agendas. Um, these are all the superintendent's consent agenda, its administrative matters are delegated to the superintendent. But they do require approval by the board. The board items similarly are consent, the consent agenda are items that are of the board's doing. All these items, the Open Public Meeting Act gives us the option to present it to us at halftime. Pass them all as one motion as opposed to each individual item. Um, just again, for informational purposes for Peggy and Steve, that doesn't mean that if we have something on there that you have a burning desire that we need to discuss or questions about, but we can't do that. But these are items provided ahead of time in our routine business items. Um, that can be passed all in one motion. And so at this time, the chair will entertain your motion.
I will make a motion to pass both these superintendent consent agenda, the change made to eight point one oh, replacing approving with authorizing, and the board consent agenda as attached. Your two and a pardon minutes.
So it's been moved to pass the, or to pass both superintendent and board consent agendas with the one modification made to item eight point one zero. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Consent agendas are passed. That brings us to item ten, which is the adjournment. There's no executive section this evening. And so, um, I declare this meeting adjourned.